I call a Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth to order. For Stan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any person on the agenda that's eligible for the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda of March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The ready of the meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion in the second, all if everybody say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the incentive agenda items.
I move to approve the incentive agenda items as presented.
I have a motion in the second, all if everybody say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next, we have public participation. We'll move on to the reported superintendent, Dr. Boy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have my Google slide up there for you. There we go. First thing I'll point out is there are notes of appreciation in your packet, I believe. And I have one that I want to share with you. I received this from Representative Dale Wright congratulating the district on their perfect score for the two thousand and eighteen APR. So he sent this nice little note congratulating Saint Gen R two. And then he also sent a copy of the article that he founded in, which was the Daily Journal. You know, it was a nice piece. And I'd just like to point out, is it Bobby Radford wrote this? And he said, "While comparing various district scores does not operate practical analysis due to the differences in demographics inside, District APR does provide a useful tool to its Board of Education administrators and teachers to determine areas of strength and areas of need and improvement." I really appreciate him putting that on there because a lot of time districts get paired, compared, and really that's not the purpose of the APR. He did a very good job identifying the purpose, and I just wanted to point that out. So I'll share the article with you, too. And I really appreciate Representative Wright taking the time out to send that card.
Absolutely.
It was very nice of him. Moving on, I do want to remind everyone kindergarten registration is almost here. Bloomsdale actually has theirs on Saturday from eight to twelve. Saint Genevieve Elementary is next Saturday on March thirtieth from eight to twelve. So if you haven't made an appointment, you have a pre-K student or a kindergarten student that you would like to bring to registration and have them screened, please call as soon as possible. And so at the bottom there, I did put the numbers Bloomsdale Elementary, five seven three eight eight three four five zero zero, the extension's two five zero two, and Saint Genevieve Elementary, five seven three eight eight three four five zero zero, extension two four zero three. This is Zeusman, and so I got the numbers right? Okay. Because sometimes I get my, you know, all the numbers are also closed. So I wanted to make sure that was correct. Next, in the superintendent's report, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor. He's going to talk about testing dates and graduation rate.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So you can see in the agenda, math grade level assessments are going to, the window is from April first, two thousand and nineteen, through May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Math and, of course, exams, February eighteenth through two thousand and nineteen, through May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. And then eleventh grade ACT test date is April twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. The various buildings, although the window is big, the various buildings will identify the weeks that work best. Under the middle school, I was lucky enough to go over and do some science teaching. They're doing a math boot camp over there, and the teachers asked me to come over and take a science session, boot three sessions, actually. It was fun. Reminded me why I had administration. But I did enjoy it. Pulling it out of middle school kids at times is tough. So it reminds us how tough teachers' jobs are on a daily basis.
I was asked if you would want to do that, and I said, "Sure, you would."
I did enjoy it. It also reminded me how much information I've forgotten since I've stopped teaching science. But anyway, it was fun. I just got done training with the middle school faculty and the high school test coordinators. I'm sorry, I'm gonna take that back. The middle school test coordinators and the high school test coordinators, they will then take that information out to the people that need training in their buildings, and they will train them as well. So that process is well underway. You've got dates identified, and if you have any questions, I will answer them. Okay, moving on to disaggregated graduation rate data. This data, for us, is a little less informative than for bigger school districts because of our lack of diversity. The reason they disaggregate this data is to identify if there are any groups within the data that have a graduation rate that's lower as compared to other groups. And so you can identify those groups and address those deficiencies. Since the majority of our students are in one big group, that data is what it is. There are three years of data up here. I'm gonna have to look at my notes because I can't see it. We are down a little bit from last year. We were ninety-four point four percent last year, and this year we are at eighty-five percent overall. Yeah, if you could. Just the two on the right.
Let's see how close I can get.
And then we have the state graduation rate there in orange. Male and female are pretty comparable. I did, let's see. If you go down to the special education, we don't have student information. We have an overall number. Last year it was sixty-three point six percent, and this year it's eighty percent. So that's moving in a positive direction. I think one of the reasons our graduation rate suffered a little bit is our graduation class was down. One hundred thirty-three students is down a little bit. I saw Mr. Haney. I did talk to Mr. Haney about things we are doing, what he's noticing, why this could be. He did talk to me about the number of credits, and I think this is in conjunction with what the middle school is doing, and then those kids going into the high school, and what the high school is doing with their Dragonfire program, and their mentoring, and all of those at-risk programs. He's noticed that the number of freshmen, correct me if I'm wrong, the number of freshmen and sophomore students that are losing credit at that early stage is being reduced so that as they get to be juniors and seniors, they are not as far behind as they were. Did I hit that?
Yeah, the only thing I would correct is the "not as far behind," really not behind.
Not behind at all.
I mean, and that's that data, if I may. That's that data I've been reporting to you guys. One thing to say about coaching a lot of times is, you know, you have to kind of see that, okay, this team is going to be different next year or the year after, and start making adjustments. And a couple of years ago, you guys gave us the opportunity to do Dragonfire because Scott and I saw that this is going to be a little bit different. We need to be more student-focused. Unfortunately, when you implement a program like that, it doesn't impact your seniors who have already been freshmen and got behind, and sophomores who have already been behind. So we'll see that way moving through. Some of the data that I've reported to you guys, I think at the last board meeting, we talked about our freshman and sophomore F's combined per semester, which is credits, is equal to what our freshman F's were two years ago when we started that program. And that's still those groups that are moving through that got behind. So we're optimistic that with the work we're doing in the reduction of the F's and that sort of thing, we don't have the students behind it. We're starting to see that now with scheduling as well and looking at Dragonflex programs because now we're getting seniors coming in that don't need certain classes, they don't need certain credits because they're so well into the game with all of their credits that now we're able to open up programs like Dragonflex and say, "Let's start looking at other options." So it's been an evolution, and I believe that we'll see that increase because of what we're seeing out of our freshmen and sophomores currently.
So just to hit on a couple notes, we did have twenty students not graduate on time this past year. Fifteen students in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen students in two thousand and sixteen. We still have a strong attendance policy. I feel like our administration does a fantastic job touching base with those students continuously. Students have to bring in notes, you know, it hasn't changed since last year, so they're still, and we're working out the kinks as we go along, too. You know, there's some growing pains when you implement a new policy like that, trying to figure out the ins and outs, how to best get it accomplished. And I have continuation and evolution of the Dragonfire program. What is the, there's an acronym, an AT-RISK, that you did with your faculty?
SAVERS.
SAVERS. And that's related to those at-risk students as well?
Yeah, if I may, one of the things that we're looking at right now is what's called SAVERS, and it's basically an academic, emotional, behavioral rating system that we can use to help us identify. Because one of the things that we recognize is, we all know, and actually it's a K-12 screener. So we're hoping that once we kind of get the kinks worked out of it on our end, that maybe we'll be able to work. I've already talked formally with Dr. Mercer about doing it for eighth graders so that we have the screener coming in to the high school. But one of the things that we noticed was missing, especially in this day and age of trauma sensitivity, was any real sort of rating or identification for emotional or behavioral scale. We do a lot with the academic scale. We don't do much with those two. And those two are huge factors in keeping students engaged in school and keeping them on track. And how do we identify that? And then one of the things that SAVERS, we believe, will allow us to do is our teachers will use it to rate, and then we're going to ask the students to rate themselves. Because one of the concerns that we have is, is the outward presentation to the student what's going on internally. And so we're starting to look at those new tools and those new resources like SAVERS to get us a better look at not just academically are they passing it, but overall, are we providing all of the supports and the assistance to them that we possibly can? And are we learning as much about them as we possibly can?
Everybody's gonna think I'm weird, but that piques my interest because my dissertation was based on a different measure, and it was based on measuring students' connectedness with school. And that emotional and behavioral piece is really interesting to me. So it goes back to, I think I might want to do another dissertation. I'll get over that soon, I'm sure. So it's not like we let those students go that don't graduate either. We stay in contact with them. We continue to closely monitor them, and hopefully in the five and six-year graduation rate, it will come back on notice.
And that's what I was going to say. This is just for your graduation. As you know, on the APR, we have a five, six, seven-year graduation. And if you track these classes, we are having more kids graduate. It just may take them five, sometimes six years. I know Mr. Haney works on them pretty hard, so.
Yeah, we've got one young lady that I think, and I can tell you this because we've had a lot of conversations, she's an English paper shy of her diploma. So we're really trying to, and Mr. Collins has been exceptional as well at staying on some of those that we have on sort of independent programs that are in that five and six-year range.
So have you had any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
That's a great idea, what you guys are doing.
It's an evolution. It's a constant adjustment. So that's all I have?
Okay. Hold on, I'm gonna get on the right computer.
I would also like to share with you tonight that the Saint Gen R two recognition and retirement banquet is set for Friday, May tenth. We are going to host it at a different location this year. We're gonna use the KC Hall here in Saint Genevieve. When we went to book it this year on May tenth, which is the second Friday in May when we typically have it, we discovered there are three weddings in Saint Genevieve on May tenth. So we jumped back to May third, and there are three weddings in Saint Genevieve on May third. So that pushed it to either the Friday before graduation. It pushed it to April, and one of those Fridays is the Chamber Gala. So we started looking for a different venue, and we're excited to have it at the KC Hall. We're actually gonna use their cooks, of course, to provide the meal, and, you know, we all have wonderful meals there. So it will be on Friday, May tenth, at the KC Hall. All Saint Gen R two employees, their spouses, significant others, retirees, board members are all invited to this banquet. So if our retirees are interested in attending, please, you know, they need to contact Donna Hook in District Office, and she will make sure that we get their RSVP. The agenda, great meal, awards, recognition of twenty-five years of service. We have several of those this year, celebration of retirees, and of course, everyone's favorite, the attendance prizes.
Yes.
Those are always wonderful. And I do have official invitations to give you once we get back to the opening sessions. The next item is a clarification. I know several of the board members have been asked questions recently about the Valley Springs TIP settlement money. And I've been asked a few questions, and to be honest, I didn't know because I wasn't superintendent when this happened, so I wasn't part of the discussions and the decision-making. So I had to do some digging, and it took some time, but I finally have the information. And so what I'm going to present to you tonight is actually from a report that came from the treasurer of Saint Gen County, Judy Thomas. It's a report that she gave to all the taxing entities. So the Valley Springs TIP settlement was six hundred thousand dollars. There were approximately seventeen thousand, and I'm gonna round up and round down, seventeen thousand dollars for the attorney's fees. So the total settlement was five hundred and eighty-three thousand and a little bit extra. So for the disbursement, the real estate entities got three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents. The sales taxing subtotal for the entities was two hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. So I know the rumor out there is that Saint Gen R two got four hundred thousand dollars of this money, and that's not true because when you add the district on here, the only portion that the district was able to get any money from was the real estate side. That is where, that is where we get our money. So from the Valley Springs TIP settlement, Saint Gen R two got two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. We didn't, like I said, we didn't get any of the sales tax money. That went to other entities. So the question may be, how did the district spend the money at that time? So what the district did is, in June two thousand and sixteen, when the budget was presented, we were projected to deficit spend by six hundred and two thousand, six hundred and three thousand dollars, I'll round up. The TIP settlement again was two hundred and, we'll say, seventy-nine and five. So when the district got that money, they placed ninety-one thousand in Fund One, fifty-eight in Fund Two, and a hundred and twenty-nine, almost a hundred and thirty, in Fund Four. So I guess the next question is, okay, now I know where the money went, how was it spent? Why did you put it there? So the placement of the money in Fund One and Fund Two was to help cover that deficit spending in both of those funds. And that deficit spending is for salary and benefits of all the certified and non-certified staff. So the money that was put in those two funds covered the deficit spending and helped the district meet salary and benefit expenses. The money that was placed in Fund Four, the approximate hundred and thirty thousand, the district had just, was finalizing bits and pieces here and there from the two thousand and fifteen bond issue, and some of the projects that were down at Yanks North, Yanks South, and Leon's, there was not enough bond issue money to finish some of those projects. So the money was placed there to finalize some of those smaller projects at those fields which are used a lot by our community.
The whole community.
It was just to put those final touches to make it a facility that we needed and the community needed also. So that is where the money is. And again, I want to make sure it's clear, the district did not receive four hundred thousand dollars like the rumor states. We received two hundred and seventy-nine and five, if you round it. And that's how it was spent. Do you have any questions on any of that?
I just have a statement on the six hundred thousand deficit spending on a twenty-five million dollar budget. We over-project expenses and under-project revenues every year.
Yes.
So it's not like we're planning to overspend by six hundred thousand. It's just in case, a best guess.
Yes.
And this money helps, because we ended up in the black that year.
Yes, we did.
Of a twenty-five million dollar budget.
Dr. Boy, I think you've done a tremendous job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I hope the people appreciate what you did.
Well, and you know, I've told several people, if you have questions, just ask.
Absolutely.
I will not always have the answer because, you know, I've only been in this position since July first.
Almost here.
Almost here. So there's a lot that I, you know, I still have to learn, and it may take me some time to dig, but I will find the answers and give them to you. You know, I want to be transparent. I want to be upfront. There's nothing to hide.
Wouldn't that, that TIP end, what year was that? Fourteen?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah, that part gone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next. Personal reports. And I put pictures on, it's tough. Yes, I have to sort, sorry. I was looking at my nice pictures. Okay. Ready?
Okay, so as I started doing my report, I thought, well, hasn't been that busy because we have lots nowadays. And I got, put a whole lot into a few slides. We have been extremely busy. We always do Reach Across America, and it's just really fun. We had a lot of guest readers. We had somebody convince Lauren Mercer we'd get a hat. She was awesome. She enjoyed it, and her kids enjoyed her. So it's one of the most fun weeks of elementary. Then for leading and learning, I could talk all day about what our lead groups are doing, but something I thought was really neat, I started seeing these signs up there at the corner that says, "Today recess, I will." And it was our kids of character, and they started putting these signs all over the place. They put them on the recess door, they put them in the cafeteria, they put them by the water fountains. And there are little things like, "I will play with somebody I haven't played with." "I will help a friend." "I will go sit by a buddy on the buddy bench." It's so cute. And that's a really neat idea. And the teachers and the students come up with all these items on their own. We have a choose-kind board, and there's, in those little blue, their envelopes. They can pick one of those acts of kindness out of those envelopes and perform that act, and then they get their name hung up on that bulletin board. Down at the bottom is our student spotlighters. They are making a whole timeline of all of our fun activities for the year, and that's in the gym hallway. And then our student spotlighters also did one hundred reasons why we love Bloomsdale Elementary. That was cool. We had our awards assembly, which was in the orange t-shirts. Ms. Kirchner's lead group, they were collecting hygiene items for, it was for Girl Scouts, and I don't remember where they were sending that. I think they were sending it to girls' homes. And then up at the top were our positive officer girls. So I just kind of threw all those in up on slide because I didn't have enough. Our big rock right now is tracking wings and lead measures. And all of these pictures were in a kindergarten classroom, and I thought, you know what? If kindergarten can do it, anybody can do it. And that's Miss Nelson's classroom. She's awesome. Their lead measure is increasing math proficiency, and she did a beginning assessment, and all of their goals are math-based. Some of them are writing numbers because they have a lot of reversals. Some of them are practicing addition or subtraction, and then some of them are just counting to one hundred, or like adding multiples, or, but they all split into little groups, and they were all working on it theirself, and they were tracking their lead measures. Did I do that? So I'll stop while you do this, right?
There you go. Good job. Just stand there and, oh.
So anyway, that was just something I'm really proud of. And then something else I'm really proud of is we're trying to reach out to our families and show families how to incorporate the seven habits and their circle of control and emotional bank account. I mean, every adult needs to go through those workshops. So we had a family workshop on Saturday, and then Jerry and I got together, and our teachers did that on our March first P E day for all the teachers. And it was fun to see, like, kindergarten go through as a team, and they got to kind of work on it as a team or a family. I said, "You're kind of like families today," or something like that. But never really do we get that kind of time to sit together and focus on our families. So it was really, I think everybody enjoyed it. And then this is always fun, me and my guy Diggins, and me and my gal Dodgeball. But what was really cool was we had a mom team, and they meant business. They came up with the nine, and they played the whole time. And the one mom has three sons, so she hadn't sat down in the whole two hours. That's it, at Bloomsdale Elementary.
Well, hello. All right, well, like Lori, it's such a challenge to decide what to put in every month. So I do always like to put in somewhere our students of the month because they are chosen by their peers. Each classroom, you elect it or select it based on different attributes of kindness and living the habits. So we had our student of the month luncheon a couple of weeks ago, and we enjoy having time with the kids and eating lunch and ice cream and talking about all their great stuff. Okay, oops, I went too far. Okay. Is that fine? Okay. All right, so building community, I decided this time to put a slide in because it seems like we had a lot of community involvement in the last few weeks. So first of all, we're left this career day. We want to thank all the individuals in the county who came in and did career day for our fifth graders. We had a great day. Bloomsdale kids come in, the students lead it, they just plan it, they emcee it, they reach out to the guests that come, and it's over at the pack. And so we want to thank Amy, Bella, and Jessica Crimanger for working with those kids and having a great career day every day. In the middle one, we want to thank the community for supporting our fundraiser. We had a really great K eight fundraiser, that's those little cards where local merchants are on there, and you can go visit it for some special deals. Today, we had a great day with lots of metal rights and pizza. And again, that's a community thing because if people don't support the fundraisers, you know, they aren't successful. So that really helps our leader in the activities, and the kids had a great day today. And finally, there, there's, there we are. And the teachers, our local McDonald's, we want to thank Heather and the whole crew at the local McDonald's because they reach out to us this year twice a year, and we really had a great night, and so many kids and so many families came out, and teachers, and we had a lot of fun. So even though it is a good event that raises money, it's also more than that. It's just a lot of time spent together with our families.
There was a lot of people there considering the rain.
Yeah.
So the inside was packed the whole night, pretty much until almost the eight o'clock hour. And you made?
Oh, we made eight hundred and forty-six dollars at five months, which is like a record.
It is a record. Yeah, a record. And Bloomsdale is, is it this week?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Okay.
And I always have to share, you know, share how old I really am and tell all the young kids, "Oh, no, I opened up this McDonald's." I was like one of the very, we were the first pottery workers. So they're like, "Oh, my God, they, like, had stoves back then?" That was lit up. It was awesome. So anyway, so I'm partial to our McDonald's. All right, learning and leadership in our building. Well, there is Dr. Taylor being a very good leader, playing a little RTI bingo. He also teaches children how to tie neckties. So Dr. Taylor does a great job of coming in and getting in with the kids. I always like to pick, there's literally hundreds of photos to pick from, so I will go, "What could we focus on this month?" So the picture. So Dr. Taylor does a great job of coming in and getting in with the kids. Um, I always like to pick, there's literally hundreds of photos to pick from, so I will go, what could we focus on this month? So the picture, um, right above under the text is a group of fourth graders working on what we call an investigation, and that's an MRI strategy we've used for years. Kids work on nonfiction reports, you know, be it a biography or an animal or whatever. And it's, it's, you know, a different take on kind of a research paper for young students. So it has to have certain text features. It has to have certain amounts of text and some graphic images. And they were just so proud of their investigation. So those students are fourth graders. Below that, our group of first graders in Mrs. Seltzer's room, and they celebrate each week with their sight words and fluency. Um, they work on fluency to become smoother and more accurate readers. And so they were showing me their, their, um, celebration for their fluency and sight words. Up in the upper corner, we have some second graders measuring and working very diligently on all sorts of measuring and ruler tasks. And then we have some preschoolers in Mrs. Crimenger's room who are always synergizing and doing awesome things together. They were working on some spring flowers. The kids are getting very, very ready for the math test. Lots of hardcore, hardcore making up for Miss Snow Days and hard work right now going on. So... Oops. But we don't work all the time. We do have a lot of fun, too. And so a Repress America Week, like Lori said, it's just a really big deal. The Cat in the Hat and Thing One and Thing Two come, and we have guest readers in. So of course I picked a few special guests here tonight who joined us. But we want to thank all of you that were able to come in and join us. And I want to really focus on the bottom left corner. Marcus Robinson is Jordana Walk's husband, and I brought this to share with you tonight in case you haven't seen his book. He's a local published author, and he came and he read The Butterfly Kite to many, many classrooms and then donated some to our library. So I'm gonna let you, uh, see this and pass it around because it's really a beautiful book. So we were really tickled that Mr. Robinson was able to come, and the kids were like, wow, a real-life author. So that was fun. So thanks, everybody, for coming in. And then, um, we've really had an uptick on positive office referrals. We're working hard on recognizing and noticing, celebrating success. So we had a variety of kids who went really above and beyond, like, super big acts of kindness or helping a friend at recess or whatever. So we want to give a shout out to these eight kids. They were our most recent positive office referrals. And I didn't know that Dr. Flea was gonna put that in, so at the risk of being repetitive, because it is so important to us that we get the word out to family, friends, and neighbors. So I just wanted to put that up there because I knew it would get out to media tonight. If you haven't called yet, please do. Um, we really want to get every little kid that is eligible for kindergarten to watch our screen views. So, and I think that's it for it tonight. All right.
Good evening. Uh, Dr. Mercer sharing, sharing his role this evening and asking if I would take middle school slides. And so I wanted to start with he, um, this man on the left might look a little familiar to many of you. Mr. McDaniel, um, got the award for the social studies teacher of the year at the social studies conference. And, um, that's by peer nomination, but it's quite, quite an accolade, so we are very proud of him. It just made the announcements today. And he got that, I think it was two or three weeks ago, and I kept hearing kids congratulate him in the hallway, and he was already, he's already moved on, and he's really, you know, to do what he needs to do here. He's like, what's everyone congratulating me for? Um, but he does an awesome job for us, so we wanted to just let you guys know, um, that he was recognized. We also had our conference honors band and choir, and they travel to Park Hills. They practice all day with a clinician, and then they go back in the evening and perform. And so you can see our kids, our choir, I'm sorry, our band kids on the left, and then our choir kids on the right. These are our positive office referrals since the last board meeting, and I actually was able to just catch up with all of them and give them their free ice cream passes. And I like to pull them in in a group. Um, somewhat, some, some of that might be my procrastination because that gets kind of docked down on my to-do list. Um, but I pulled them in as a group today, and it's more fun to read their positive office referral in front of the rest of them and listen and see them kind of light up in front of their peers. Um, a lot of the, of these six office referrals were things, we've had multiple new students. So these kids just stepping up before lunch and going, hey, I'll walk to lunch with you, you know, because that is a really scary thing to walk in the cafeteria with just under two hundred kids staring at you because you're the new kid. Um, that was two of those. And then if you see J.C. Beckerman in the bottom left, she has little times too by her. I was like, J.C., we're just gonna over-celebrate you because people have noticed you twice this month, doing the right thing. Um, and there's a lot of, like, just finding random money on the floor and bringing it to the office. I mean, that speaks volumes for middle school where people aren't paying attention. Uh, so those were most of the things that I dealt with today. Um, our spotlight award this month goes to Ms. Lindsay Elders, and she does our middle school band. And if you guys will look down through, these are comments made about her from her peers. There is a word that honestly comes out in almost every single one of them, and that is, she is positive. And you can see that in her picture. We chuckled because we took more than one take, and she looked that excited and that positively happy than all of them. Um, but that's really her. She lives and breathes positivity and, um, you know, is really excited about everything she does with band. And I'll talk about her in a minute with our fifth graders that came in, but she's excited about what she does, and she does some really awesome stuff. All right. So this is like multiple things that happened since last board meeting in middle school. Um, on the top left, that picture that looks like a ton of kids kind of in our foyer there, that was all of our kids headed out to National History Fair Day today in Cape. And they left at seven fifteen this morning, and they all went down there and presented, um, their boards or their websites. Um, we had, um, some singing. We had all kinds of different things going on, and we always have a good showing there. I haven't gotten the official. I think I was told we had some moving on. I know that much. Um, and we'll probably have details for you of what that looks like at the next board meeting. Um, we also had our fifth graders come up to visit just yesterday, and we got to work them into all different places in the middle school. We had them travel around. And, um, we got to meet with pretty much every class. Every class of fifth graders almost on their own, so some good question and answer time, and we got to have them to ourselves. Like Scott had a group go through his and then come to mine, and Ms. Meyer helped out. Um, a lot of cool stuff. And Band and Choir also got to present to them. And what I said, I would bring up Band, Lindsay, the excitement that Mrs. Elders brought to that fifth grade, those kids were like, you could see them like, this is middle school? You know, and she's making them sing SpongeBob SquarePants lyrics, and she's got Baby Shark going. Um, so she brings a high level of energy, and our kids were pretty impressed with her. That was fun to see, and it's a good little welcome, um, for them to come to the middle school. We also, um, had polar plunge, which I know many of you either participated in or were there, um, and know quite a bit about. Um, we had a middle school team, and we had also a student team. And then I know that Kristy Kleghorn is, is very proud of how that turned out and, you know, how much, how many, how fun, oh, my goodness, I can't talk, how many funds came in, and it was just a good showing altogether. I hear she has a awesome goal for next year that's very big. So I think everybody's gonna be plunging next year, so we all need to prepare. The bottom middle is the M J H S lock-in, and at this lock-in, they do it every year in the spring. And you can see they have those fleece blankets that you tie. They do those tie fleece blankets, and then they donate those, um, in the community as well. We have our last school dance. We, we think. And Scott Merrill crossing our fingers. There's a lot of little school dances. We think maybe we have Dr. Taylor to thank for that, but, uh... We had a school dance last Friday. It was well-attended. The kids had a good time. It was fun to see the difference in this woman's life. Our sixth graders are confident, and not very many eighth graders show up, and at the beginning of the year, the eighth graders take the lead. You know, the sixth graders kind of sit back. So it was a good, interesting shift in the flow of middle school to kind of watch. Um, last thing on there is map boot camp, which Dr. Taylor talked about a little bit earlier. We're in full swing. Um, we have started that boot camp. We have teachers in their content areas, and they get to see the kids on Mondays and Wednesdays outside of the regular class time and just do a quick review and a quick, you know, shot of what's to come on map, and it seems to be going very smoothly and seems to be going well. So... I think that's it. Thanks.
Good evening. I have a couple things. Scott and I were talking, Lori, your pet, uh, wonderful parent, has three boys all in the elementary. She goes more than two hours at a time without stop. Um, I also want to, want to say, and this isn't in there, but I, I come here every time and I think about the positive office referrals, and I see what they're doing. Uh, I had Mr. Draper come to me the other day and give me a few statistics about the freshmen that I just wanted to share with you. In our grade level meetings, uh, we have time built in where they can actually, as a group of teachers, call students and to talk to them. But normally it's about, hey, how can we help? What, you know, it's not going right. He told me this year that we're in the mid-nineties so far as far as the number of freshmen who have been addressed. But thirty-three percent of those have been for that boy. Way to go. Great job. That my staff in those meetings not only has to call in those ones that maybe we need to give a little nudge to, but calls in the ones where they take the time to say, hey, look, you guys are doing an amazing job for us. We wanted to take minutes personally. Thank you. So although I don't actually have dames and all of that for that, that, that actually is a fairly routine occurrence at the high school with what we do with grade and level meetings. So I thought it'd be interesting to notify you guys of that. Um, as I did last time, this is, I have staff who write a lead-in, and since the wonderful Miss Bailey Otto has come on staff. She has graciously agreed, I think it was two weeks ago, to write the lead-in for me, so I pulled a quote from that. And I just thought this really was the epitome of the shot in the arm that we need this time of year to facilitate the great work that you do in the classrooms and all around the district. And I loved her emphasis on that, that you do in the classrooms. Because that's one of the things that my staff that we've talked about time and time again, is we do amazing things in the classrooms, and they never make it out of those four walls because the teachers just don't brag on that stuff. So I'm glad to see that she's gonna be in there bragging and welcome. It's great to have you. And I will also say already, I've inundated her with stuff, and today she hasn't sat me down and said, yo, whoa, Mr. Heaney, you gotta slow down. So I appreciate that very much. Uh, Scholar Bowl. What a fantastic team. Uh, Dr. Rook has done an amazing job with this program year in and year out, and I'm gonna tell you, we finished third in the M triple A. And, um, you might be wondering, why are you kind of smiling about a third in the M triple A? Because our number one wasn't there that day. And so we had two-place all-conference, and they were, um, Caleb Brewer, I believe. I had the names in there, and now it seems to be gone. Uh, Caleb Brewer, Isaac Watson, uh, were tenth, and Caleb was second. And then again, without our number one player. So we're really optimistic about what this team is capable of and where they're going. But I also think if you look at the diversity of the ages in this group, it really shows the job that all the buildings are doing in preparing kids because this is really the true essence of academic competition. Now, where was our number one at? And we'll get to that in a little bit. What I've got going on here is Mecca Academic Awards were announced, and as always, I'm incredibly proud of the leadership that Mr. Nick shows in the athletics and what our teams do. And you'll see that under the distinguished awards, we had varsity football and freshman football, and those are team GPAs of three point oh to three point one, or three point two-four, but in our case, three point one. Outstanding awards, and this is always what I'm proud of, from three point two-five to four point oh. You have boys cross-country, girls golf, girls cross-country, cheerleading, varsity volleyball, freshman volleyball, and JV volleyball. It's hard pressed for us to find any bit of one of our organizations that isn't engaged in getting, uh, academic award. And to me, that is quintessential of what we do. We talked about athletics being an at-risk program for us, but it also really is a wonderful place to build character and to strengthen our excellent athletes and our excellent students. Um, this was a neat one because it, what we've got going at the high school right now is really, to me, something I haven't seen in a while. And it's really kind of exciting, the way our staff is engaging with community and the way our community is starting to engage with us. And this was actually an article, um, Ashley B. Ridley and Haley Clant, and mostly Ashley B. Ridley, worked on students serving heroes, which basically putting together care packages for soldiers as part of S, S C C L A. And I've come before you and I've talked before about the wonderful job that Dr. Etherston does. As a matter of fact, I believe, currently as we speak, she is down in state with that group competing right now. Uh, time in and time out, I believe maybe actually this project may be a showcase down in state right now. But I've talked about the wonderful things she does, but this article actually, and I never even do this, Regions Bank has sort of a newsletter portion of their website where they will print stories and that sort of thing, and this actually was on Regions, uh, Bank newsletter. And I found out about it because my mom informed me of it. Sent me an email and said, hey, I happened to come across this today and thought you might be interested in seeing it. And I was like, absolutely. So it's really neat the way that, that there's those positive messages that are getting out in all sorts of facets, and I really appreciate that. Uh, S G H S signings, as I talked about before, we have had a large number of them this year, and I just couldn't be more excited about that. Uh, Isabella Zerwick signed with Western University. Isaac Boyd signed with McKendrick University. And Isaac's picture is impressive to me because, first of all, if you know Isaac, it doesn't surprise you. But it really speaks of the school community. When you're having that kind of day and your parents are there, grandparents are there, but then you have members of the community, the coaches, a friend, it talks about everything that's important to you. And to me, that is just the embodiment of, uh, who we are and what we do here. And I just, I saw that picture, and Isaac has accomplished so much. I'm gonna miss him dearly, but he's a wonderful young man, and I'm proud. And I'm proud of all those people that got to put their stamp on him. Uh, Sam Stolzer, as many of you already know, but it, it's just incredible, has been accepted into the Naval Academy, and that is just, it's incredible. I mean, it really is. And, you know, at four years, I've hardly seen Sam smile. Those of you that don't know, he's a happy young man, but he just doesn't show it. But to me, when I saw that senior picture with him in the Navy hat, knowing now, it, it's just evident what it means to him. And then I snuck one in over on the right. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we talked about staff recognition at Roderick. I think we're on our third or fourth one. And that's Sam Fisher with Dr. Gary Smith. Uh, and that's been really neat because if you get to be with Mr. Toons, uh, when he tells a staff member, hey, you've been selected. They're just sort of like, what? Really? And I, I'm going to lunch. And it's almost, they come to me like, is this really the way this works? I'm like, yes, absolutely. You have a blessing. You can go to lunch. But there's so sort of an awe. You can see it in Dr. Smith's face there, that how proud he is to be there with Sam. So that's been a really neat program, and I appreciate the board letting us do that. Uh, I will put a shout out to my students. I know they don't normally watch this, but, um, we're starting to try to encourage them that it is open all staff. Elementary, middle, they all have such an impact on our students' life to not overlook, you know, the one that maybe has most impacted you over the past year or so, but has made a great impact on your education overall. So... Competitive speech and debate. I want to say huge thank you to my entire staff, first of all. And I know a lot of you may not be aware of this, but we've kind of become the perennial host of competitive speech and debate districts. And it started years ago when we had, I think, an off day or an early out or something. So our building was gonna be empty on the Friday afternoon and then into Saturday. So we said, hey, we'll do that. And so we did it, and of course, as always, Chris Google and Bree Zell did a fantastic job with it. But then the next year, we were chosen to host it again, but we didn't have the off day. And so what happens on this day is basically the pack is used, so our choir and our band are displaced the entire day, and Mr. Mitty and Ms. Chokers just do a wonderful job and roll with it. And then as we get to around, uh, noon, one o'clock, we have to turn off all our bells because you can't have any interruptions. Uh, we displaced several teachers at that point because we need about six, seven classrooms for these things to be placed in, and it all rolls just so smoothly. We still have transition classes even without bells. We still get everything done. And our students, they have to be quiet in the hallways because, of course, there is competitions going on in the classrooms while we're passing, and they do an absolute amazing job. So a huge thank you to my staff, and, uh, I've already been given the dates. I think it's March twentieth and twenty-first for next year. So we're gonna be right back to doing it again, which is wonderful, I suppose. I will also say and thank you to the board and to Dr. Flea and Dr. Taylor. We get an insane amount of compliments from other students and staff because, of course, they're in our building for a good portion of the day, and they see our facilities, and they see the opportunities that we create, and they see our use of educational spaces, and they're just super impressed with that. So I want to thank you guys for some of the freedom that you've given me and my staff to kind of think outside the box and make some things work at the high school, and it's noticed by others as well. And as always, we had a huge slew of state qualifiers. Soraya Zerwick, Janie McCrop, Shani Zell, Caitlin Fuller, Clayton Hook. There's our number one in, um, Scholar Bowl, and he was there qualifying for state for competitive speech and debate, and that's why he wasn't able to be at... And that's why he wasn't able to be at the M AAA. And then again, Caitlin Fuller and Addie Taylor were first in policy debate and Rook Wilder was first in Lincoln Douglas debate. And the speech and the debate team took home second place. That's absolutely incredible. And what I'm really proud of and for is we've been traditionally finishing first, second, unfortunately, mostly second, but never usually to the same first place team. And that's what I love is we have consistently been rocking that sort of record in districts, but it's taken other people to step up and beat us. So I'm just so proud of that whole group and what they're doing with that program. Finally, a moment to be really exceptionally proud. You saw Mr. McDaniel earlier and anytime you know that when you're given an award by your peers, it's huge. Mr. Russ Toons was the Samoska Counselor of the Year for the Second Year. And that will qualify him. He'll now be in the running. I think there's about nine or 10 of them that are in the running for State Counselor of the Year. So I wish him all the best of luck. Moving forward, I can tell you with Mr. Toons, we had to lie to him to get him down there. I didn't feel bad about it, but he did his best to try to make me feel that way. He was not happy at all. But he came in the next day and he said, I just want you to know, I'm over it now. I'm like, good, because I hate to think you're gonna hold a grudge on that. And then the other thing, this was announced, we haven't had the event yet, but this is such a rare occurrence for us. The Principal Association has something they call the Scholars 100 and basically small schools are allowed to put up one candidate, large schools are allowed to put up two all throughout the state and they pick what they feel are, and a decathlon of things from ACT to GPA to volunteer time, to everything that you can consider that is on that application, they pick the top 100 in the state. The last one we had was Erin Beazel a decade ago. That's how rare it is for us to have one. And I'm now proud to say that we have another one, Mr. Clayton. So that's the high school report from all of us.
This is so exciting. This is the best part of the award, is to hear.
Me?
Yes, yeah. Absolutely. And your bow tie, what a sign. I love bow ties. Anyway, it's just so refreshing to hear all of our students and the teachers and the administration that get them there.
I congratulated Russ this afternoon at a game. He pointed out that he was still unhappy about how it occurred. And he was very happy it did occur. He's well deserved. He don't like surprises.
No, it is my recognition.
No, no.
So he may not be over at Mr. Hane's.
We're full finger.
Then we're, Board Director, you have some safety reports?
Yes.
And before we move on, if you wouldn't mind, Brian, this young lady here, I would like to introduce her to everyone. This is Bailey Otto. Bailey is the St. Gen R2 Communications Director. She started, what, two, three weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
And she finally got a desk this week.
[laughing]
So we are very, we are very excited to have Bailey. She's already making us think outside the box and we really appreciate her already. So we're looking forward to the great things that she does. I was asked recently how we got this position, if it was a new position, and I said, we'd taken a position we had in the past. It was volunteer coordinator, then it became community engagement coordinator, and it was changed once again to communications director, which is what we had been working towards getting. So we're very fortunate to have stolen her from LDU. So her experience is going to be very valuable to us. So, welcome.
Welcome.
And that little girl. We love you, Bailey. And that is all I have for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business in this instructional program presentation by our high school, our mechanics.
I guess that's me. So a lot to follow up after all of that, but we do quite a bit of fun stuff down in the shop on a daily basis. First of all, I'm gonna thank all of you all for, I don't know when the last time anything was actually purchased for the shop by the school, a large purchase, but we did get a lift that doubles as alignment wrap down there. And it's, it's been phenomenal. The students can't stop talking about it. They use it every day. They love it. It's a thousand times safer than what they were dealing with and they also appreciate that as well. So some of the equipment hasn't been changed out yet, but you all may know that we wrote a grant here recently, an enhancement grant. We're hopeful to see the state come through and help us out with some of those things. But here in the pictures are just a few of the students working on some of the vehicles. The bottom right over there is the new lift and a car up on the new lift, myself and a couple of students underneath that. This would be the different angle of the same picture over here. The students and I, we kind of have a unique relationship. I don't want them to look at me necessarily as their boss because I feel like if they look at me as their boss, then they're gonna look at the next guy as a boss, the next guy as a boss. You need to put yourself in that position and be the boss and run the shop so that you can be an efficient worker and maybe not in an automotive shop, but just in life. And so those are some things that I really push these students to do. One, never be too good to ask for help. Two, always try to be the boss of things. And we're making strides in the right direction, I think, but it's just a, it's a long process down there in the basement to get things going the way that they need to. It's been a long time, as you all very well know, since we've put much attention to it. And I appreciate all of you helping us get the things that we need to move forward. So if you guys need a car wash, or having oil changes or anything of that nature, I don't, I don't know what all work was welcomed by the community and board members and staff members in the past, but we have a very open door policy now, especially these students need the experience. They need the time on these vehicles to, just to further their knowledge, you know. So if you guys have anything for us at all, by all means, feel free to ask. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
That was just the ICP. And I will share that Mr. Joker's, for the lift, has already asked me if we could bump up the ceiling and take some of Mr. Thompson's classrooms.
I don't think they needed the ceiling height like we do. We'll just move their floor up a little bit. Right. And it's middle schoolers too, so.
I told Bob to ask Mr. Thompson.
We'll move on to new business, the addition of fifth grade sections of 2019-20 at Bloomstown Elementary.
Yes. For the current school year, we currently have three classes of fourth graders, three sections. The total number of fourth graders out of Bloomstown Elementary was 54, whenever I did this earlier this week. I don't know if Lori said anybody moved out, but 54 students. So that puts about 18 students in each class. We currently have two classes, fifth grade out of Bloomstown. There are 39 students in, in the fifth grade, so there are approximately 19 to 20 students in each of those classrooms. We do know for our next school year for 1920, we have 53 students moving into fourth grade. So we will need to keep three classes at fourth grade and that would put about 17, 18 students in each class. And here's where the addition comes in. We do have the 54 fourth graders moving up to third grade. So we will need three classes and that, again, that will keep it at about 18 students. Mrs. Zeusman and I looked at all the other grade levels. They're all solid numbers. There's no way we could move anyone to reassign them because those numbers are going to need everything that we have right now. So we do need to add another fifth grade section at Bloomstown.
I move to approve the reset in the fifth grade at Bloomstown Elementary for the 2019-20 school year.
Make a motion in the second. I'll give my stand odds.
Aye.
Oppose, motion against. And next, we have MSBA Board of Directors, Board of Directors.
This is something that we do every two years. So this is a two-year term. And what I did is I put eligibility and responsibilities up here. And so I hate to just read it to you, but I think it's important that we get the information out. So our employees and our community know what this person does to represent the district on this, the Board of Directors. To be eligible, you have to be a member of an active member board. So our board is an MSBA active board, serve at least two years on their local board and be nominated and approved by action of their respective local board of education. So that's what we're gonna do in a few minutes. The responsibilities, serve on MSBA Board of Directors, supervise, control, and direct the affairs of MSBA, establish policies or determine changes, discretion in the dispersment of MSBA funds and adopt rules, regulations for the conduct of its business, attend quarterly Board of Director meetings, those are in January, April, July, and October, attend legislative forum, regional meetings, regional SBAN meetings, leadership summit, and MSBA annual conference, serve as an alternate for the Regional Executive Committee Chair, work collaboratively with the Regions Regional Executive Committee Chair, staff liaison, and field representative to support and promote the purpose and goals of MSBA and to mobilize local school board members in the region to be enthusiastic advocates for public education. So this is what, the eligibility and responsibilities for the person that would serve from this board. So I guess at this point, we would need to take nominations.
I'll move to approve the nomination, Martha Reesinger for the position of Board of Directors Representative, second.
Any other nominations? Anyone? Okay. I guess Mr. McDaniel will need a vote.
She gonna call it, she can.
I don't know.
Need a roll call vote?
Let's, let's go ahead and do a roll call, yeah, on this one.
Hang on.
Sorry.
She gonna name for her?
I do. I do. Okay, roll call vote. Okay. Eric Bossard?
Yes.
Dave Boba?
Yes, sir.
Ellen O?
Yes.
Jim Kresner?
Yes.
Kevin Gannon?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Ruhlo?
Yes.
That motion carried with a roll called over.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
How many years?
Ten. Ten on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's very rewarding because I'll tell you what, when I first got on that board, I would go up there, because we meet in Columbia, and when I go up there, it was like, I had this, I didn't have to, but I sat just to listen to all those other school districts. Now, they ask me how we did this or what we did to this. So that's very exciting. Thank you guys.
I want to thank all the board members too, because a few weeks ago, charters and vouchers were
Oh, yes.
On the floor of the Senate and House.
Absolutely.
Kind of quickly thrown out to the floor and I think all seven members reached out to
We did.
Dale Wright, Elaine Gannon, and Gary Romine.
Mike Anderson.
Along with a lot of other school boards and those, those would not pass. They still could, but.
Still could. And I will also add to that, we had a lot of employees reaching out and contacting.
Good.
Everyone. And, and just to let everybody know how they felt, they were really excited to hear from us. So, and then we went to the legis, went to the legislative forum and that was very rewarding. That's what we do. We work for our public education. Okay. Mr. McDaniel.
I'm gonna get into this. I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote following the RDR open meeting on April 16, 2019 to be held in the RW Thomas Library, 715 Wynton Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri for purposes discussing and voting upon following items of business, legal action, cause of action, or litigation, lease purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individuals, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes, electronic data processing, and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are open, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiating contract until a contract is executed, individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has provided their interest, records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting of abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policy, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, a portion of record that identifies security systems or access codes, records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes are used to protect electronic transactions. Now for the move that notices meeting as a tentative agenda to be posted as required by law.
Sir?
Motion is second. Roll call, Eric Bossard?
Yes.
Dave Boba?
Yes, sir.
Ellen O?
Yes.
Jim Kresner?
Yes.
Kevin Gannon, Ms. Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Ruhlo?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
I'll move to go to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break. Second.
I have a motion in the second. I'll give my stand odds.
Aye.
Oppose, motion against.